... Big river, oh, where they ring Those golden bells for you and me Oh, we shall know, know sin no sorrow If the night may come to call We have our good self with those who will sing We shall know, know the blessing Oh, our God sweet, precious Oh, where they ring Those golden bells for you and me Hallelujah, oh, don't you yet The bells now ringing Oh, you hear that? Angels singing Give them glory, hallelujah We shall be free Oh, in that time, oh, we know Just beyond the sharp big river Oh, where they ring Those golden bells for you and me Oh, when our days shall know their half They'll be sweet, the sun that We will take home our star spirit to be free Oh, they never move With our good sladdens We shall meet that lovely lady Oh, where they ring Those golden bells for you and me Oh, where they ring, oh, don't you yet Hear the angels singing Give them glory, hallelujah To be free To be free Oh, sing forever for you and me Oh, the hallelujah Where they ring Those golden bells for you and me Don't you yet Don't you yet The bells now ringing Don't you yet The angels singing Give them glory, hallelujah To be free To be free In that time, oh, sing Hallelujah Don't you yet Hallelujah Where they ring Those golden bells for you and me You and me I say, don't you yet The bells now ringing Don't you yet The angels singing Give them glory, hallelujah To be free Oh, in that time, oh, sing Forever just beyond the sharp big river Where they ring Those golden bells Hallelujah For you and me Hallelujah Hallelujah
Amen Let me just say this Singing We have to get the revelation Of what the song says in your heart Hallelujah When you hear the bell ringing And the angels singing It will be a glorious day, amen How many are looking forward for that day? Amen There is a country far beyond the starry sky There is a city where there never comes a night If we're faithful, we shall go by and man In that city where the lamp is the light In that city where the lamp is the light That city where they come and go now I am a man who's over there Ain't afraid of trouble I am going where the lamp is the light In that city Where the lamp is the light Where they come I am a man who's over there Hallelujah I am going where the lamp is the light In that city Where the lamp The lamp is the light That city where they come I am a man who's over there I am going where the lamp is the light I am going where the lamp is the light I am going where the lamp is the light Hallelujah Glory to God, amen Hallelujah Blessed be the name of the Lord Jesus Christ You may all take your seat, amen Hallelujah Glory Amen Blessed be his holy name We've got a couple of specials That we have for this morning Hallelujah Amen We expect the Lord to bless us We'll start with this Sister Kudzi Sister Kudzi And then Sister Katero Sister Leetu and Brother Junior Sister Tilda And then followed by Lastly by Sister Nyasha Hallelujah Amen I believe because of the time When you finish Please don't wait for me Come forward and bless us Hallelujah Amen Let's just clap hands for Sister Kudzi as she's come Hallelujah
God bless you I have said our creations long ago They were brought before the Titans throne They were torn at his spade He would reign out and they mocked him But one by one they chose to die As our own and they would know he not Like a prey, a hunter He was a beast and no more The abhorrent city I am a child who is to the land We know my strength We know I am I will see to all our hiss I beg almighty to do the damn How they end Yes, God, and I am born But oh, Jesus, if still so sore Then I'll never to have bore To reach out this world To embrace our own And one by one let us live our lives For the new earth to keep us safe Is a chance that's on the fly now too Let us bow to his name And hold his hand I beg almighty to do the damn We know I am We know I am I will see to all our hiss I beg almighty to do the damn
And send me always in the presence of the Lord In whom there wisdom and action is learned For who are raging on the seasons of sun And living sacrifice only so that My hope is in the Lord From this time on and evermore My hope is in the Lord forevermore His helpness has come with the blessings of Midas in his brokenness To offer healing and forgiveness And all the time he will find the hearts that play My hope is in the Lord From this time on and evermore Oh, my hope Is in the Lord forevermore My hope is in the Lord From this time on and evermore Oh, my hope Is in the Lord forevermore Oh, I can't expect To come and assist a day To his house Who will receive What you came for What you came for Come realize it Realize That's what is a diserred now It deserves Come believing you'll hear from the Lord With two or three gathering in his name Oh, your peace and hope be in the midst In the midst And in the preaching of the word Our faith is renewed The answers to life's spirits become clear My brother, come expecting Since his hour Why don't you come and be sitting Since his hour You will receive You will receive What you came for What you came for Come realize it Realize His word is a diserred now It deserves Come believing you'll hear from the Lord Oh, come say To his house Come today say To his house Who will receive You will receive What you came for What you came for Come realize it Realize That's what is a diserred now It deserves Come believing you'll hear from the Lord
I'm a man who's over there Ain't afraid of trouble I am going where the lamp is the light I'm a man who's over there Ain't afraid of trouble I am going where the lamp is the light I'm a man who's over there Ain't afraid of trouble I'm a man who's over there 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 Oh, iye, iye Oh, na nyasha tashé Oh, na nyasha tashé I'm a man who's over there Oh, iye, iye In the blood of Christ my Lord In the blood of Christ my Lord In the blood of Christ my Lord
Hallelujah! Glory!
God bless you saints. Mirai nesiva. Mirai nesiva. Mirai nesiva. Mirai nesiva. Mirai nesiva. Jinobi banaye. 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 Hallelujah! Glory to God, amen! Hallelujah! We praise the Lord for beautiful singing. And God bless you all that sang, may the Lord give you all. Hallelujah! Humming, we're blessed, let us just... A round of applause for all those that sang, amen! Hallelujah! Amen! I'm gonna ask something weird. Can one sister, give Sister Ruth the mic? As we just, I wanted to sing for us. "Because He lives, I can face tomorrow." Hallelujah! Let us bless their name as we all just... Hallelujah! Bless the Lord, amen! Please, just, she's gonna start with us, just give her perfect key. Let us be in worship, those that are expecting to hear from the Lord. The Lord will give you a potion, amen! How many can pray it up? How many can be living? Hallelujah! This is the day, amen! You can start, Sister Ruth, let us all lift our hands in worship. Hallelujah! As we sing "Because He..." Very softly now, as we worship the Lord, amen! Glory to God, amen! Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Glory to God, amen! Hallelujah! Praise the Lord! Amen! We just want to sing softly again. As we prepare, you know, for the preaching of the word. Bend on, bend on, Brother Blessing, if you can help us with that one. Let's raise our hands in worship. As we invite the Holy Ghost to come down this morning. Bend on, bend on. Meheben on this morning. I'd like to invite Brother Berhane. Just come and commit us to the Lord this morning.
Mighty God, King of King, you are the consuming fire, O heavenly Father Lord! O mighty God, this morning we invite you once again, O heavenly Father Lord! To come in our midst, O heavenly Father Lord! Mighty God, to do that which you specialize in, mighty God! Onkulu kulumo shere, you specialize in things for the impossible, O heavenly Father Lord! O mighty God, this morning, as we come into the house of the Lord, Baba! We come expect, "Lord, help us, Lord, to look beyond the veil, O heavenly Father Lord!" And recognize the voice of God! Today, O heavenly Father Lord, we are not worshiping a God of history, Lord Godfather! History is just a reference, Baba! To show that you are the same God yesterday, today, and forever, O heavenly Father Lord! O mighty God, Baba! I can see, Baba, those who are crying to have a child, Baba! There will be a baby daughter, by name here, Abigail! O heavenly Father Lord, Baba! There will be a lady that will please the Lord, O heavenly Father Lord! O mighty God, Baba! We want to forget about ourselves, Baba! And focus on thee, O heavenly Father Lord! And say, "Have their own way, Father, have their own way!" Father, you are the poor child, we are the clay, mighty God, Baba! We will not tell you how to design us, mighty God! But Baba, you know what is good for us, mighty God! Onkulu kulumo shere! But this moment, Baba, we are asking for a perfect will, O heavenly Father Lord! Onkosa makos, Baba! Let there be no unbelief in this place, mighty God! Onkulu kulumo shere, for you said in thy word, Baba! Without faith, it is impossible to please God! Onkulu kulumo shere, Baba! As we come out here, Baba, we want to please thee, Baba! We wanna do that which is speaking to your side, mighty God! Onkulu kulumo shere, Baba! Judge your children, O heavenly Father Lord! Onkosa makos, your minister, Baba! Give him once again courage, mighty God, Baba! Give him the boldness, mighty God! To speak that which is unbelievable, O heavenly Father Lord! But mighty God, we are not judging on him, but you are judging in thee, Lord Godfather! You are a God of the paradox, O heavenly Father Lord! Onkulu kulumo shere, Baba! We are waiting for thee, Baba! Onkulu kulumo shere, faith comes by hearing, hearing thy words, O heavenly Father Lord! Speak to us, mighty God, Baba! We are opening our ears to thee, Lord Godfather! Onkulu kulumo shere, Baba! Oh, thank you Jesus, thank you Jesus, thank you Lord! Be with us, we are asking in the never-failing name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, amen!
Praise the Lord! Uh, let's take our seats this morning. I want to greet you all in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. That's 1%. 1%. I want to greet you all in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen, that's, that's 50% now. I want to greet you all in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. 100%. Full bar and catering. Amen, we are so happy to be back in the house of the Lord again this morning. And, uh, we are under great expectation. Seeing that the Angel of the Lord visited us last night in a mighty way. And I know that he is already in the building. He is already waiting, brother, before... There should be a performance. There shall be a performance this morning. This morning, amen! The devils are ready to flee. Satan is in trouble. His chains are shaking. There is a man here! That can turn on the light! I don't get it. I'm not the one to do that. Today, amen, at least not today. So, God bless you saints. Let's just tend to our neighbor. And say, "May God bless you." Amen. Good to see you again, you know, greet them with a smile. I am so happy to see, uh, Brother Josh. Uh, Brother Josh, uh, is family to us. And I think he came with his family, I don't know why they are not together. Is he standing by in the building? Is she here? She, oh, there she is, okay, alright. Yeah, so he came with his family. Happy to see you, Brother Josh, if you can stand up so that we can welcome you to church. Amen, and his wife, Sister Ruth, if you can also stand up as well? There. God bless you so much, so happy to see you. They attend church in Regent's Park, uh, at our pastor, Atapewa Mandiambas Church. And, uh, this morning came with us, just to support us this side. Amen, and this is the second time, right? Second time for them to come. So happy to see you. I also saw the Pharaoh came in with his family, I saw them coming in. Brother Pharaoh, where are you? Can you just stand up with your wife and your kids, please? There, God bless you, Brother Pharaoh and your children, and Sister Pharaoh as well? Welcome to Cosmic City. Is this your first time to come to Koko? Yes, for the first time in Africa, South Sahara. We also have Brother Arnold, Brother Arnold and his family, if you can as well. Yes, God bless you, Brother Arnold and his family. Happy to see you and we want to welcome you to church. Amen. Um, also see some friends that came. They always come to support us. Young man, a friend there also. Happy to see them, amen! And, um, they are so supportive, they are, they always support us. Also Sister Ruth. In the building as well. Our amen corner. God bless you, Sister Ruth, happy to have you. Uh, thank you so much for the special song, that was really beautiful. And I think our choir was missing in change. I don't know what's happening with our choir. We need to keep that up and running. But, but we are so happy. But I think Brother Tyway, language being left out. We need to get our language into action in church. Otherwise, it might get it. So, I don't know who must help us, song leaders, please. Throw some songs in our language as well. Please, let's, let's have northern sutu as well in the mix. We want it in there. Especially in the mix, if you want to learn some of them, then we can become better and better as we go. Amen. Uh, I think I would like to ask Sister, itai Mangobe to stand up. If you can just stand up against the Mangobe. God bless you. Amen. So she was visiting us for the past few weeks. Uh, but it's the time for her to go back again home. So she is going to leave maybe on Friday or Thursday, I'm not sure. So she's saying to you, "Goodbye, amen." And, uh, I was telling her that we are looking forward to singing again soon when she comes back. Amen, and if she comes back, I can have a brother for her. You know these ones, we arrange them differently from the younger girls. These ones, we can arrange them for them. Like, this one we can arrange, right? This one, that's not a problem. Alright, uh, I'd like to ask Sister Chido to stand up. Sister Chido, if you can stand up. Yes. Just stand up like, like that, amen. Let's sing for you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you, Chido. Happy birthday to you. How old are you now? How old are you now? How old are you now, Chido? How old are you now? We wish you many more. We wish you many more. We wish you many more, Chido. We wish you many more. Yippee! Hey! Amen. God bless you, Sister Chido. We wish you a beautiful and wonderful birthday. And, uh, you know, it's a birthday, I want to say it. If I've known people that are good, Sister Chido is one of them. Dependable, solid Christian. Always having the right mind, always on the things of God. You ask her anything, she does it without any complaint. You take your visitors, she doesn't even complain. May the good Lord see Sister Chido. You are a blessing to us. So today is also a special day for our mothers. And I would like to say, "Happy Mother's Day." Amen. So for those brethren that were not seen here tonight, we say, "Something must be done for our mothers." For our sisters. And we say, "Something needs to be done." If something ends me directly. Don't send through Sister Ruth, directly to me. Say, "Pastor, I did not get anything from my husband." Then I can see what I can do. God bless you. Amen, I just want to read a quotation before I sit down. From Spoken Made, uh, the inversion of the text. Paragraph 254. It says here, "I respect and honor you." "I respect and honor you there with your red roses on. Your mother, if you want to do anything for her, do it three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Go to her house and offer her, and live for God, that's the thing to do, and bring up your children. And when you then come up, we will bless you, after you have passed on beyond the veil. That's the real spirit of motherhood, the real spirit of Mother's Day. Mother's Day is three hundred and sixty-five days a year." Amen. So we need to honor our mothers. Three sixty-five days a year. If you have a mother that is alive, speak to her on a daily basis. If you are busy, send her a text message every day. She is so important to you, and she is a valuable asset in your life. Let us honor our mothers, and let us respect our mothers for being, being good. And also, a mother responsible for the majority of success on spiritual side and on the natural side of any child. Abraham Lincoln, the greatest president of the United America, was like that because she had a godly mother. She set him on a good path. The first thing she did was give him two books, one was the pilgrim's progress, the one was a holy Bible. A mother must buy her children a Bible. The first Bible that you must own must come from your mother. May God bless you. Uh, as we stand up this morning, uh, to prepare for the preaching of the word, our friend and beloved friend, Brother Simon, is here again charged. Amen, and we are looking forward to hearing the Lord speak. Uh, so happy to our friend, uh, you know, a long time we, we, we went to Kadoma, where we're having meetings. You know, I, I, I had never, I'd never dreamed of high larks in my life. I'm talking of the latest. And, uh, so the meetings were over, and they said to us, uh, we're gonna have dinner at, uh, at, uh, at this Kadoma Hotel Conference Center, I think that's the right word. So we were traveling, and then they said, yeah, you and your wife are gonna go with this car. I said, what? You know, I said, that's fine. And, uh, I got in the car, and, uh, that's when I realized cars are fun. You, you need a good car. Friend, the car, when I put it on the road, it wanted to run away. And what was happened, I think it is called, what they call adaptive cruise control. You know, when you are, when there's another car that is approaching and you think accelerate it too hard, it slows down on its own. I was like, I told, I said, babe, this car is different from our old car. Listen, when we did that, you know, it's good to make someone feel good, and, and, and that's how he taught me that. It's good to make, make someone feel good. We then, we went to the airport, you know how we went to the airport? With a Range Rover. And my wife was sitting in the executive. That road is not that smooth, you can feel that it has bumps if you are in a, because I remember when we came back, we came from the airport, we're using a BMW X1. And then when we are going, we're going with the Range Rover, and Brother Simon, he was personally, not an driver, personally, he drove us to that. And brother, you know, because we enjoyed talking, we almost missed our flight. But he said, when we were at his house having lunch, he says, John, while you're going to miss the flight. When he said, where it is, brother, we almost missed that flight. God, because he had said that, God made sure that we caught our flights. I think I told you when you came back, they made us feel so good, they made you so welcome. And, uh, we just hope that we're also going to try, we are, we're not able to do it at that level, but we definitely gonna try our best. And this, we want to make him suffer under the armpit. Let us pull, pull whatever you can. Anything else to preach about, let him come to your problem, let him come to your situation, that's why we brought him here. Amen, and God did put inside him some equipment, equipment to deliver God's children out of bondage in a certain way. You know, persons differ, they come in different kinds, different gifts, different anointings, different labels, brother is on his own special. Use at that level, may the Lord bless you this morning, amen. As we invite our dear brother, can I start? It is so sweet to trust in Jesus.
Just to take him at his way, just to raise our body more. Just to know, I say hello. Jesus, how I trust him, how I prove the Lord. Oh, God, I pray to trust him more. Oh, God, I pray to trust him more. Rich as he is, as he is a friend. And I know that thou art with him, we'll be with him. Jesus, Jesus. Jesus, how I trust him, how I prove the Lord. Jesus, Jesus. Jesus, rich as he is. Oh, God, I pray to trust him more. Oh, God, I pray to trust him more. Oh, God, I pray to trust him more. Oh, how sweet to trust him, Jesus. Just to take him at his way, just to raise our body more.
As you know, the saints are Lord. Jesus, Jesus, how I trust him, how I prove.
But if there's anything sweeter than our troubles, it's to trust in you. Lord, we trust in you this morning and we are believing in you this morning. Lord, the singer sung, wrote the song and he said, oh, how sweet it is to prove him over and over. Lord, we are unworthy to even try you, but Lord, you deemed us faithful that you proved yourself to us time and time again. We thank you, Lord, for the service last night. We thank you for the evening we've had. Lord, we are begging for another portion. We are begging for another drink. Lord, we are saying let it be gasha upon gasha. The things that left yesterday may best them this morning. Any spirit that might be lingering over your children may maybe totally disorient you this morning. God, Father, for your love, may you bless your children, bless them for they are supposed to be here. Let it be done for the glory of the Lord. I thank you. We love you this morning and we give you the prayer. Lord, even as the word shall go forth, may you be the one speaking. I apply the blood of Jesus over this entire building. I apply the blood of Jesus over any problem and we are saying peace, peace, till this morning. Granted, Father, for your glory, Jesus Christ, my dear friend, amen. I'd like to preach this morning in the name of Father, Son and Jesus Christ. May this be for a moment. Amen, I have been in the house of the Lord. They said, I was glad to say that to me, let us go to the house of the Lord. I believe that's your intention this morning. Let me say to eat a bun of you this morning and to see that you're all in life, we all get smart. And may the good Lord bless you for this service and whatever you may be praying for, whatever you may be praying for, I'm saying may he be the one to answer it. So good be with you over the course of these years. Since last night, we've been having a hard time ourselves. Would like to make a powerful invitation for me to be here today. Initially, I was just supposed to be bringing this service. However, by divine providence, we ended up arranging that he made and I believe we work together for good. I'll thank him for his invitation with us and like I said today and that we are being treated like kings. And like I said, we regretted not coming in. So that would have taken full advantage of everything. And for me, the next time, we are going to over utilize our welcome. Love your Father and His family. I appreciate His hospitality. Sakeh, I have a lot of questions to preach me and ask you very much for me. Like they and taught me a lot, but about who, he always a liar for me. And for that, I thank him. As he may the good Lord bless him, I want him to be. So thanks to Sister Ru for supporting the men of God together with the girls and all their in-laws, may the good Lord bless you. Even those that shall be back home, say, Jen, it's Auntie, as you be going back home. Did warn us, so the pastor said, take out everything that is there. I said, does the man want to be in a coffee to our work? Because I am quite worn out from yesterday. I learned to you, I had left in over eight hours and I thought it was busy today, but I worked and was praying till out there and only to bed. So not even to prepare today, I only had five minutes at the desk and I just two one outs, I go and rest. So you pray? I pray that the Lord will speak to your knees. Or the devil almost, the devil was whispering to do something. I wanted to do something deliberately because I knew that this would aid me and help me. So when we left somewhere, I just wanted to anger my wife. So the brave come here and tell the person next to you, I forgive you. I was just looking at you here, the men of God is there. However, something just happened to do it and I looked at that, but the brave was going to let me down there. However, if you came with a loved one and things were not well, I want that home, forgive for service. Now I'm trying to find my bearing. I was sharing my wife and Brother Lawrence. Also thank you two for him being our personal driver. And may the blessing grant him the desires of his heart. And you know, God swears upon finding out. I noticed that air light in his vehicle yesterday and I want to say something about it, but I said, I will let him speak to me first. Then I rest the issue of cars. So allow me, I'm not planning on starting on this lot, but I hope it won't get carried away. But I had to, I think I shared it the last time came for first meeting in 2023, not the last, the ones in 2023 December. I shared the text about my vehicle. My vehicle was behaving, but two or three weeks prior to that, my must vehicle had gone down, it knocked. So and the reason was because the engine checked for a long time and it needed something to turn the two thousand one thousand. But you know, it was actually meant to go for the rest on a Monday. I just later came for the service while preaching the Sunday and we had this on this day. And you know, it's a car that I bought my mom for her fifth birthday. It was so dear to her and you not going to get in trouble. And indeed, when we got there, I was in trouble and you would tell. Then I just said, Lord, I did not ask for permission from my mother's aunt. I'm not wanting to do any of this. I was going for this with the Lord. Now story show, Lord provided the exact amount that was needed for me to just get a new engine for that vehicle. So I went back to you can mine, I was doing engine check lights and I say, no, the devil is a liar. I had a problem with my mother's car two years ago. I cannot improve with my car. I'm just arising the whole test to be, I know that just my jet fitness of our time. I played over my car and I said, now what happened that one to go to have an engine check light? Because the friend of mine who was using it away was the wrong type of viewer. He put diesel into a petrol car and the engine check light. Therefore, go for assistance and I was a bit late. I got the mechanic, the mechanic said they saved and the day I was using the car, I could not take onto the mechanics. So I had my car and I just made a prayer. I said, Lord, I know my car is not working. Everything is not working. I know you, you that working at Hannah. And there was a utility to wine. Lord, here is my vehicle diesel. What is easier, turning water into wine? There's no elements of it except for the water part. And yet diesel has elements of control that are more than the water. And I break my inner God, I know my vehicle is hurt, but the cancer is we dealt with and you give that kind of case. What is harder, to be a mechanic or to be a doctor? For someone to a doctor, you go for a minimum of seven years, for at least up to 15 years. And for a mechanic taking three years, they are set by mechanic. I said, look at the maths, which is easier, to be a mechanic or to be a doctor? I say, maybe you don't know the answer. I for you, to be a mechanic is an easy job. Therefore, you did something that doctors cannot. That's more my mechanic can, that is easier job you, even over my engine, may you perform something. I went back into the vehicle, switched to a vehicle and the engine check light disappeared in the car. I went up to the auto shop for them where they put the machine and check what is going on with the car. They were shocked. Then they saw that and they told me, everything is a peak performance. The chief mechanic asked the way you test your parts. I don't answer him, but he declared, he said, you have original and new parts, where everything was disoriented. And then asked me a compliment. Now, when I put you in my car, I usually put five percent petrol or nine five and unleaded, which is what I believe happens after. In the UK, that's the cheaper option, but we have got the premium unleaded petrol, which is 99% unleaded. So I put 95% to my vehicle, but the chief mechanic then gave me a compliment and said, you did a very good thing. Therefore, the new parts that in your vehicle, you saw put 9% premium petrol. That can convert diesel, not to 95% petrol, but to 99%. It also converted the 95% petrol in day to 99%. But let me God also this service, put your things to be at prime performance. May that 95% be converted to 100%. May that diesel be converted to 100%. X566 says, there came about people from around Golem. Now the prophet says you to your name in the scripture. So let me say this morning, there came about people from around Zomos City and they came the apostles and they had the word. And the Bible says that every one of them who came and had them speaking was totally healed. Which means there was a hundred percent outcome of results. Let me say this service, there will be a service of a hundred percent outcome. Now the prophet says, if you notice the Bible, the books of testament, it ends with that. And aim signify, this is where it all ends. A first drop also means this is the end of sentence. But booking the new gentleman. I believe. We had one to pretend to do the power of God and we will just do it. We can't afford to do. And I don't know if you knew before, before my pastor and I, I'm saying we will be before the Lord. In a place that is sticking like that with poverty, I just declared that I said this year. They could feel to buy in their veins. I told them, look for money for the passports. The brothers who failed, they went to get their passports, what the one in. Without price. So let me say, this year we shall be flying. This year shall be. I want to drive away fast. I want you to become the service, you count the money you remember. I leave, you want to. And she said, God bless you. I said, God, you don't have to say that. And I am next to somebody in my neck and I don't know how much she had in there. I said, everyone, everybody in that head. I lose that. He give it to you and talks. Then I didn't look at the denomination of the currency. I just put it by the side of my door. Went for dinner. That you can put some facial features together from the voice. I realized sister gave me the, is a pastor's wife. Yeah, I think I had everything. I went back to the vehicle. That denomination, oh my God, it was. Oh, I can get the true and the false. I realized. I thought it is. She said, I was like, wait for it. Then ask to wish you. Who did this? Say, let me go see the pastor and you. And if they did, another person will be telling you tomorrow, but I won't. But may you bless the saints in our local assembly. Then he gave an envelope and says, this one me, that is great to give you. This is a token for you and I'm not giving it to the other. I'm going to give it to a sitter. Give the sitter envelope. If you remember, I had 200 runs that I was given and the Lord fulfilled right to the dot. The sitter opened the envelope, it was exactly 20 runs. Now, like I say, I don't know if this was because I'm something with mania. Oh, I don't think anyone. This is. That was only a mountainhead here and shaking with it. Saying I'm trying to find my footing from me where I can. Just made the name of this month. Oh yes, I was. I'm not interested in him. But the prophet says, who was unbelievably. Just because of them to me, indeed, these were nothing but the easy brother who talked to me. And he asked me, brother, are you aware? You did not enter this single beach, any of the terrible lessons. And he asked about the teaching of the God of poverty. I said, my brother, he specialized in that one. My brother, I'm sorry, but I, I find it to be. After me, I still, still can't understand. And maybe I. But it was so hard for him that there was that guy who was here. He did. And then he happy after that, he gave me some amount down. And he told me, he told me that I was. And but like that, which he say, I want to give you that. I know. Tell my brother, I don't want to say you, but I told him. Then another person. I was. That's where the divination started happening. Let me say, I. But you just believe it with the fact that he I know is new. Let me tell you, if you don't believe the pictures of the saint. Like I said, I, I know how they happen. They happen differently for other people. For some people, they do feel an electric in their body. I believe the pastor does not mind me sharing this testimony. I think if you know Pastor Tandimara, his wife was afflicted with diabetes and the other one high blood pressure. Since I believe it was 10 years also somewhere there and with how effortless the pastor works, he's afflicted. And then I was preaching. Now for me to do that service, I wanted the details, but the brother who were there had never heard about me. So and when they saw me, I think they had, because it was a tent. So they had requested for pastor Mutey two minutes and pastor Mutey is so wise. He realizes this terrain, this needs this type of a scapel. This one needs this type of, that days you need a shovel, the days you need a pick. Rather, the bravest ask for a pick come today. So at the end of your year, you shoveling the blessings to you. So Pastor Mutey realized here, we need someone who will ground so and just be shoveling the remainder of the meetings. He called me, he said, you are requested to preach tomorrow morning. At this tent meeting, I will be there because he know, I've known once few also, he knew, just a focal, I will be there. Because he's one of those people, I expect so much because of what's done for my ministry. So when it calls, if I can, and I said, I will go. Something told me, go on. But remember, pastor also a guest. You were supposed to preach. Then in the evening when I confirmed, he just told the brethren, brethren, I feel like tomorrow I should get someone to preach. Then who do you suppose should preach? He said, I'm getting someone to preach, brother Tira, so you should come and preach. The brethren thought, brother Tira is coming. So when they start coming, it was brother Tira's car. This brother Tira is here. Our brother. And this was brother Tatu. He got me, he introduced me. This is. He would please off, elevate you like, ah, I'm big person. This is the teacher telling me, you know, and because the brethren are accepting someone, but in his heart, he knows, he's a light side gentleman. So I went, I struggled to, to find and then eventually I found accommodations, left at 10:11. It's time for me to stand in the pulpit. And the ministers were waiting outside the elders of the place. I said, I want things of those there, but I'm sure I said, I'm not meant if I name drop his name. Because it was not a ben station, but it's a conception. They were not saying to pastor Mutey, pastor Mutey, who are elder here in service? Pastor Mutey said, I will call that you insist that I have to speak, but this is June 18th. And the brethren said, okay, may you give him a time, that 30 minutes he should be done. Because you know, because of age, you know what I could say? I could carry in the world of your people. And the pastor wants something like that. That's why I said, I thank the pastor for instructing me with his book, because it's very easy for me to come and put it. The brother where you saw is a genuine concern, the elders were concerned. Pastor Mutey says, now it's okay, see if I can constrain him, but when he met me, he said, take your time. You know what the other says, take your time. So I did not know about everything that was after, where I got taught this story because I then heard the content from the place. So I took my time and knowing that there are some brethren who is said, okay, restrict him to a short time, then you hit the law. Took my time with preaching, started sharing testimonies, spiritual Lord came down. You know, sometimes it comes down, people may not feel it, but I know it's there. Then Sister Tandimara had me sharing. I did not share a testimony about BP, but I challenged the spirit of blood pressure and the spirit of sugar diabetes. Now this was the mission, Sister Tandimara and brother, they would sleep. Between one and four, they would never sleep and sleep around five. That would be one of the year, that happened to them. And the sister hears, this is what is happening. Now I told my wife that usually what is happening in the spiritual realm, the sisters are the first spiritual beings. They are more spiritual than brothers. This is why if you go to a shrine of a witch doctor, that's one to manifest, to yield to the spirits of the ancestors are also the women. That is why boys, they should not stand in the pulpit because they are very manipulated. When the spirit of the Lord comes down, even if the people come, the sisters are the ones who are the idiots. It's rare that brothers get things like that. So sisters are spiritual beings. Just making the point, so if I say Sister Tandimara felt something, she is justified because she is the most spiritual. So I was declaring pointing the spirit of blood pressure. I got to the sugar diabetes, which was the main thing in her body. She looked and grew myself. Sister Tandimara came to receive blessing and shook and she felt a shock electricity going on her body. Because she's more spiritual being. She felt a lack of electricity, started praising the Lord. But what I love about the Lord, he can also make those who are doubting a little bit, he will bring them to the platform to save. Even though you're unbelief in your body, fear not. Sister Tandimara, he saw his wife coming and wondered what is going to happen to my, when I shook the wife's hand. But what happened to him? The same electricity that stuck the wife struck the pastor. Without me being in contact with him. So I'd say maybe Sister Tandimara was being over spiritual. What a brother, what was happening to him? Divine interference. Let me see, this one, this happened to us. Although we got to there, yes, until you know the Bible, the testimony I heard about the scapel. Or you know, maybe you might have heard it in different places because Gorokatkanda or schools we went at different. To me, it's a, of course, I'm in the medical field. I had another giving to me and he said a scissors was inside a patient's body, same thing, a utensil was in the body. Do not compare the nose to say, oh, this one he say was a scapel. This one, maybe you hear another one who say the ghost was letting them know, it's all the same thing. So my father, the one who shared this testimony in the locker in her room, he testimony and he caused such a shock. There was a brother who had kidney failure, who was sitting in front for this time. He had, he gave a bit of noise, then he goes to that one. He did not say that brother for the prayer clock was, because he had given, a sister met with his old. After, don't let him not get into that. But he gave testimony, who's met with and he had mentioned for the sister. Because he's my father and for him, because he junior prayed for this and that, sometimes it might seem, people, it might not have been the correct way. So he said, a same brother was giving a prayer clock and he prayed and this is happened. The scapel that was in the patient's body disappeared. All the patients with kidney failure, eating this and he just started thinking, it's something to him. He said, Lord, if it should, I believe it. Let it happen to me. He went back, he's check up, it's Wednesday, they took a natawa, kidney failure, where you're supposed to go on dialysis, the kidney fails no. Or let me say, these testimonies are giving back to other testimony right now. Oblivious. So people were unaware, who the other was. Things running, people went away. My father never explained anyone, he just was supposed to catch it, catch it. But in contrast, people never assumed or knew who it was. And like this testimony is for them to be added to mine for the glory of the Lord. So I was content that the testimony is going around and I was even content when it's being given. Because the first time we've heard it in part, simply saying that that brother Tira, at least people are just acknowledging the movement of God. Then it might not be, I can say this, our pa has not been feeling well. He's been since last year and it's been a very terrible situation. So my, 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 my mothers have visited us and she shared, you know, thinking I was, I came back home. I, I, people did not realize who was the in the testimony. So my sister was there, they were doing wonderful time one another. Now the sensitive part was the part where my pa is not feeling well. So it's been a very dire situation, if I can put it in context, as in the easiest of moments. So they were in fellowship, then you know, lifting around, lifting testimonies, God can do something. Then my aunt said, you could that testimony of the prayer clock, you should fight that sister and if she's the, because I think that prayer is such an anointing. That even if it's taken, put upon the sick body of our pastor, it will happen, be healed from the deathbed. And bankruptcy did. If you know the proper clothes, usually after it becomes a paradox, it was missing. So my dad said, he thought she was anointing, but why do we need to look for the air clothes? The one for the prayer cloth is here right now. The shock on my aunt could fix, because she was, but she just tried to down it. Then this is how she downed it. She said, yes, he might be here, but anointing that might be there might be different. Because do not play with an anointing that can cause a scapel disappear from inside the body of someone. And when she say that, it angry. I felt a funny feeling and because of what I felt, I left my parent bedroom and I went back to my bedroom. The interesting, there had been a sister who called the UK, she did her own issue. Then she had a mother bound in the wheelchair and what happened to her? Challenged her, who was bound in a wheel for two years. But the mother had what happened to the daughter, she got in touch with me, explained the situation that got her to be in a wheelchair. She said, but I'm not going to do this. So that she, and my ticket back to the UK, I'm not going to put, I need us, I'm no longer able. I fly a ticket to Zimbabwe and put that I'm disabled, but the return is going to disable. I believe that going to see me and pray for me, I shall be here. So say it's a certain date to make that happen. I am going to be picked up on your side and I'm going to make two omises to meet. Then we're going to see what God is going to do for you. The anger I felt, I said, I will not direct it what much because my mother spoke in oblivion. I'm angry, just something to be destroyed. Then something spoke to me, I picked up my phone and said, my sister, I need you come to Zimbabwe right now. Telling you, you are going to leave that wishing. Only say to day, I come with some righteous indignation. I'm saying right now, from your condition, you shall leave that condition, you shall not be the same again. You should not remain the same again. Did the same what happened? I said, sing his enemy. And my ma said, maybe the anointing, but I need God to prove to me, was she telling the truth? And indeed, my brother, my sister, the angel of the Lord was in the neighborhood. He left our residency, took a flight to England. The very next day was England, met the sister in wheelchair, met her from the wheelchair. And when she rose from the wheelchair, the wheelchair was upstairs, fell down the stairs. It was there, she was praising the Lord. She was in tears for more than three hours praising the Lord. Then the daughter said, let me visit my mother. She visited the mother, she saw the wheelchair on the floor. Then she said, oh, my mother must be dead. Because if she.